Call to order the regular council meeting, 3:00 PM, Tuesday, July 19, 2022. The City of Bossier, the call to order invocation by Jeff Darby, Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Hammond. Please stand.
Holy Father, thank you for this day that you allowed us to see. Thank you for rest on last night. Thank you, Father, for those who are here. I ask that you bless their families, bless their members of their household. Father, we pray for those who serve others. Lord, teach us to be humble in servants. Lord, thank you for all things that you've done, all the things that you're going to do. Bless us today to make good decision for those we serve. In the name of Christ Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present? Council, in accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the Council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council appointed Sergeant-at-Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Chair asks for approval of minutes?
Come over.
Of the July 15th meeting. Any comments from the public? Counsel, please cast your vote. And the approval of agenda, we have one item.
Motion carries.
To delete?
Council, we've been requested by the police chief to remove number six under new business, adopt resolution authorizing the hiring of a new one police officer, the promotion of one police officer to sergeant, the promotion of one sergeant to lieutenant, and the promotion of one lieutenant to captain for the Bossier City Police Department.
So we have a motion to delete item number six?
Come over.
Second.
Do we have comments from the public? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Can it pop up?
Yeah.
Can you can pop up that time?
No.
Yeah. I got it pop up.
Yours.
Do a voice vote on it? If it's not popping up?
It's up on my screen.
It's up on mine. That one has up.
Mine's just not up yet.
Refresh it.
I think everybody's connected except for Mr. Darby for some reason.
If you refresh them. Okay. There we go. So do we have a motion, a second?
A motion.
Okay.
Mr. Montgomery, a second by Mr. Maggio.
Okay, we ask for comments?
For the deletion. I don't have everyone's vote yet. So do you want to do a voice vote?
Okay. I think everyone, it's up now, we can, we can vote.
Okay.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make the motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Any comments? Public? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Under ceremonial, we have Ms. Corley and I think Senator Peacock. Welcome.
Thank you, members, for the opportunity to come before you for a few minutes to talk about the regular session. I'll start by saying the legislature went into a special session in February for the primary purpose of redistricting under the new census numbers. Thereafter, they rolled into the regular session on March 14th and ended on June 6th, and then went back into a second special session when the courts threw out the congressional maps for redistricting. My comments are focused on the regular session. It was a general session in nature where any tax bills, I mean, any general bills could be filed, no tax bills. The state had a lot of money. We had $3 billion last year from the federal government from the American Rescue Plan Act. Half was appropriated last year, half was appropriated this year. We also had a $700 million surplus and $853 million excess for this calendar year budget. All that being said, there was, there was a lot of money to be spent. The legislature, to their credit, put money in large projects. Fortunately, we had the Jimmy Davis Bridge last year. This year, 49 North is in one of the bills I'll hit on in a moment. But they focused on paying down the unfunded accrued liability, hurricane debt from years ago, putting money for the Baton, the new Baton Rouge Bridge, Lake Charles Bridge. And more importantly, I think, for Bossier City is a project we're going to be interested in. It's 450 million to the water sector program. They're trying to move water and sewer projects out for local government entities out of House Bill 2, which is the state's capital outlay bill. They wanted to get those dealt with in the first batch of funding last year. The second batch will be for new projects. I've visited with our engineer and others, some of you on the council, about opportunities for us to apply. The window is open, we have till August 31st to do that, and I think we have a shot at doing it. In House Bill 1, I mentioned that's the budget bill. We got the money for the Bossier City Riverfront Civic Center Fund, which is appropriated every year. We also, in capital outlay, the Jimmy Davis Bridge money was, was also still in the bill. In fact, it's on the bond commission agenda this Thursday for reauthorization. Now, that's the refurbishment of the old bridge. This isn't the new money, so no action has been taken on, on the new money. This is, again, the refurbishment of the old bridge. House Bill 592 was the state supplemental bill that appropriates money, excess and surplus money. We got two projects in there. We've got money for street improvements on Benton Road to 220, and then also Hamilton Road at KCS Underpass. Those will require us to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state treasury. I've also spoke to the administration about getting that paperwork started so that we can get the money to move some of those, those projects forward. Other money we got, it's kind of buried a little bit here and there. The LTRI building needed additional funding for non-construction related expenses. That was appropriated to Louisiana Tech. We'll work with them on getting that done to make sure the building has what it needs to open properly. And then there was the North Louisiana Rail Project. I think you saw some coverage, passenger rail study up here that was also appropriated to the Department of Transportation and Development for them to look at. I, I put some bills that we were following of interest. I'll highlight a couple. Representative Bagley filed a bill and was successful to appropriate a million dollars to each economic development district up here to an LEP. They'll be able to use that money for site selection, for job creation studies and whatnot. It's kind of a placeholder as well for additional money next year. It's something that could be equally distributed to all of the areas of the state and not just one area. So you'll see some movement with that. Representative Zee Zarang had a bill that created the Louisiana Outdoor Forever Program. Not something we'd be interested in. He is the chairman of appropriations. It's, it's a new program for conservation projects. But it was brought to our attention, there's a lot of discussion about Jimmy Davis and getting that project started in Baton Rouge. Senator Peacock and his staff realized that with Lieutenant Governor talking about taking over the old bridges, a potential linear park, there was a prohibition in the law. You had to have a certain amount of square footage for the Lieutenant Governor to put that under his umbrella. So we had to amend a bill because we were past the deadline to file a bill. We had to amend a bill to accommodate him if, in fact, he takes the old bridge. No obligation on the city. This is up to him if he wants it. He's now authorized in law to put that under his department. The Speaker of the House filed a bill to provide for more coordination with the Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. I know we have a seat on that in the parish. There's going to be more training and coordination. I'm, I'm sure you will be getting contact, administration will, on those upcoming meetings. I've also included that. There were a number of bills Senator Brett Alampas, he is chair of the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Committee. The state has, for years, pushed for state centralized collection of sales tax. I know some of you have heard of, of it. They want a one-stop shop for businesses to pay rather than paying the multitude of jurisdictions. The voters killed that at the ballot last year. Speaker could not pass the bill, which is amazing, he's the Speaker of the House. He could not pass the bill this year. So what they decided to do was come up with more uniformity in how we report and how we deal with audits, multi-parish audits. So there's some standards in the law that will give some guidance on uniformity and streamlining and not the streamlined collection process that they were originally pushing for. Senate Bill 277, very important bill, and I'll probably be talking about it next year. The President of the Senate filed a bill that says prospectively, on July 1, which is the state's fiscal year, vehicle sales taxes from purchases and leases will roll into four different funds, up to 160 million, for the Baton Rouge Bridge, the Lake Charles Bridge, I-49 North, and I-49 South. I know the feds are the next to make the move on 49 North. The money's there for debt service if, in fact, they want to issue bonds to finish that project or get more money. My only request is we watch this to make sure that the money stays in North Louisiana, whether it be that project or some other project, because this is significant money. Forty, forty million dollars or so a year that would make for a nice debt payment on something we could do if, in fact, 49 doesn't come to fruition. I mentioned the rail service, I apologize. Bills that didn't pass that I worry, you know, I always worry about was the streamlined collection. Representative Glover had a bill, kind of took us off the hot seat. It prohibited a city or a parish from taking a bridge as a linear park. The bill never got a hearing, but I think he made his point, and I think DOTD got it. Is why the MOU route was probably the way, I think, everybody decided to go. There's no hard confirmation for us to take on that responsibility. The ITEP program, I know we have a seat on that board with the parish and school board. You know, under Governor John Bell Edwards, he gives 80% of the industrial tax exemption program with buy-in from the governmental entities whose villages are impacted. This bill would have codified his executive order. It did not pass. The issue is, you know, Governor Edwards has one year left on his term after next year. New governor typically comes in and does away with all the executive orders and starts fresh. The locals were trying to get a foot in and get this made permanent. It did not pass. And inventory tax, that's always a conversation. That bill never advanced either. The state has pushed to do away with the inventory tax credit, which certainly would impact us. There was a local option bill to allow Bossier City the option if they wanted to exempt inventory. None of those bills passed as well. I suspect we'll see him, is why I like to mention him in a public forum. Next year's a tax session. It'll be election year, so there'll be a lot of bills filed that the different members want to campaign on. So I did not want to overlook that. Couple of, just quick updates in general. Administration asked me about Diamond Jacks. They're still under suitability background check. The Gaming Control Board would make the next move on them reopening. I'll follow up with the chairman and once I get back to my office tomorrow. And I think that was all. We have a lot of study committees I'll be involved in. There's a Public Works, Public Contract Study Law Committee that I'll work with the city attorney on to make sure that anything we need changed gets in there as well. And as, as always, I want to thank all of you. I speak to some of you often. The administration is very supportive, the staff and our delegation. It's, I don't do anything alone in Baton Rouge. We're a team in Baton Rouge, and I work well with our delegation up here. They support us, and I just want to publicly thank them. I know Senator Peacock's here, and if anybody else is listening, I don't want to be remiss in not mentioning our entire group. Thank you all for the opportunity to continue representing you, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, I got, I got one, Ms. Corley.
Yes.
Can you go back to the one you were talking about, the Jimmy Davis Bridge? What, what, what is, what is that entailing? What are they, what do they want to do with the old bridge? Is this what they were talking about, if we get the four lane, the refurbishment, the redecking, the repainting, everything like that?
They're refurbishing the bridge under the existing capital outlay request. I don't think any decision has been made, and I don't want to put Senator Peacock on the spot, but I know he has a meeting tomorrow that the city will be participating in with DOTD to get these questions answered. No, I just know, and it's no secret, in Baton Rouge, they want the Jimmy Davis, a new Jimmy Davis Bridge built. It's a little short sighted, what do we do with the old one? But there, there's still no final decision on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, members.
Senator, would you like to speak today?
I'll just say I want to thank Bossier City and Bossier Parish. I mean, we are well served with Ginger helping us in the legislature. I know it's, it's an expenditure, and sometimes you have to explain that, but it does help us in the legislature in working together and communicating. I mean, I have your cell phone numbers and can call you, but the legislature, as you know, we, we get going especially then very quickly, and Ginger is a very valuable resource that y'all make a very good investment in having her. So I appreciate y'all doing that. I think it benefits the, the area.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your public service. Thank you, Ms. Corley. We now, item number nine, appeal and hearing.
Hearing of appeal for Alex Chambers, 2020174 Pluto Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, for violation of City Ordinance Section 14, vicious and dangerous dog.
Hello?
And that address is corrected, incorrect. It's 2017, I'm sorry, Pluto Drive.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, counsel. Y'all excuse me if I'm not exactly politically correct or anything like that, but I've never done one of these. Today, I don't have anything as important as multi-millions of dollars, but I'm just simply trying to get my dogs back. I don't know if any of you guys have read the letter that I had submitted to get this appeal process started. However, if I do not get this dangerous dog appeal submitted and over with, then my dogs will die. Basically, my dogs had killed another dog after escaping. I know that it was noted by multiple other neighbors that they escape quite frequently, and this is correct. I know it's a liability, and basically, we cannot, it's not that we cannot afford it, but we cannot put in the measures put in by the city to get our dogs back while still being deemed dangerous. So in order to get our dogs back, we'd have to get this dangerous label appealed and then find them a new home. I'd like to open it up to questions if anybody wants any clarification on the details of this.
Didn't, didn't you say in your letter, I think your landlord wouldn't let you comply with the dangerous labels or?
Yes, sir. It's his property. We just rent the house. He's not going to let us put up kennels or any safety measures in the backyard.
So your dogs got out and they jumped another fence? Or was it, did they jump your fence to get out?
Yes, they, they can scale a six-foot fence. We only have a three-foot fence, so they, they jumped that. We've tried multiple different safety measures, as I had mentioned in the letter. Each one obviously not working very well. This last incident was actually very important, and yeah, we've, we've never had anything like that happen before. Our dogs are only 10 months old, we're still trying to train them. They haven't even been neutered or anything like that. We're still trying to get that in the works. They are updated on their vaccinations and everything such as that, but yeah.
What kind of dogs are they?
Uh, was it?
Mr. Smith? Oh, I'm sorry.
Could, could he state his name and address for the record?
Yes, yes, I think, I think she said it earlier, but yes, sir, go ahead and state your name, please.
Alex Lee Chambers, 2017 Pluto Drive, Bossier City.
Thank you. And Mr. Hammond? What, what kind of dogs are they?
They're mutts, sir.
They're what?
They're mutts. They have a lot of different traces of DNA. We haven't actually officially gotten them tested to find out the percentages of each.
How, how big are they right now that they're, that they're jumping a six-foot fence?
Currently, they are 55 pounds apiece.
Have you had any obedience school?
Uh, sir, what's that?
Have you had, you brought them to the school, try to get them trained?
No, sir, we've been saving money for all of this.
And they jump a six-foot fence? Or how tall is your fence?
It's a chain link fence. It actually goes to our neighbor's property. We have a three-foot fence at the very back of the yard and a six-foot fence off to the right of the yard when you enter the backyard. So when it comes to chain link fences, they can get their paws in between it and they're able to jump over that. If it was a wood fence, or if we had a wood fence, they wouldn't be able to jump it.
Do, do, do you have them tied up or in the house?
No, we have them in the house for the majority of the time. We let them out to play, we let them out to use the restroom, obviously. We take them on walks, we have leashes and everything like that. We have tried leads before, however, leads are dangerous because if you don't tie it to a proper point, then they can still jump the fence and accidentally hang themselves.
Yeah, you don't have no kennel nut like that outside, do you?
No, I believe the city wants an eight-foot by eight-foot kennel with a top and bottom to assure that they don't get out. However, again, we cannot put those measures in place.
The dog's up to date on shots?
Yes, sir.
Have they ever attacked another dog previously?
No, they've never attacked another dog previously, and I don't know if you have the notes from the neighbors, but I'm pretty sure that they've stated that they're good dogs. They interact well with humans, never bit a human.
But another dog did die?
Yes, sir. Got into his yard. I believe they have video evidence of it and all that. From what we were notified is, once they got into that dog's yard, the dog was acting aggressively towards them because obviously they're inside of his territory now. And so in response, my dogs decided to, I guess, just off him there. It should be noted and mentioned that they are brothers of the same litter, and they do play with each other aggressively, so, I mean, that, that is in their nature as dogs.
Okay. Any other comments you would like to make, Mr. Chambers?
Well, if we get this appeal, then we can take them at home and find them a new home, and they will no longer be a problem of Bossier City.
Thank you for being here. Want to hear from the animal control officers if, if they have a brief statement to make today?
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
I'm Dylan. I'm the animal control officer on this case. Dylan Pickett.
Hello.
Arrived on scene, we got a call that day saying dogs jumped the fence. Dogs had jumped their three-to-four-foot fence, had gone 500 feet or so, jumped another three-to-four-foot fence as soon as a 10-year-old child had let a small Shih Tzu type dog out. It got basically attacked immediately and eaten alive, and that's pretty much where we're at.
Just one dog did that?
Two dogs.
His, his two dogs?
His two dogs, yes. There is a video that y'all should have gotten emailed to you.
They did not.
They did not?
No one submitted to the committee.
Okay. We do have a video of the attack.
And is your recommendation that the dogs are deemed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments from officers?
I, I'm Sherri Wood. I'm the superintendent of animal services. Good afternoon. I would like to state that I did tell the owners that if they could find a rescue that could rehabilitate the dogs, I personally would be willing to look into that, make sure that it is an appropriate place for dogs like that to go, and that they weren't just going, you know, back out into the world without being worked with. But I would suggest if you do override the dangerous dog, that you require training.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to ask Mr. Jacobs, I don't know that you have the authority to change what is written and adopted by law by the Bossier City Council. Just.
That's true.
The statute is, is as written, and I, I do understand, you know, that this is an unfortunate situation, you know? A dog has been killed, you know, apparently the, the owner of the dogs at fault do not have the means to do the dangerous dogs. But Counsel Montgomery is correct that the council is bound to follow the law as written unless it's amended.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Richard, would you like?
If anybody have any questions for me, I'm just letting them go through their case as they saw it. Yeah, and I just want you to realize, the reason it's written like that, because if we give him back to you, if he gets out again and hurts a, a child or something, we're liable. That's why the ordinance says we, we have to deem it dangerous, and the next step is vicious, and that's what we have to do. We don't have another choice.
There is one last avenue for you if, in fact, the council affirms what is the recommendation of animal control, and that is to go to the 26 judicial court. Is that correct, Mr. Jacobs?
That is correct. You can take an appeal from the, from the council's decision to the 26 JDC District Court in Benton, located in Benton in Bossier Parish. However, again, that, that would be your decision. However, if the council does affirm the decision of the Public Works, then there are, it does not mean, that's not an automatic euthanasia, okay? There are steps that, once the council's decision triggers, steps that the owner can take in order to get the dogs back and implement certain safety measures with that. You know, that's, that's the way the statute was written. It's just the price that has to be paid, you know, you know, to deal with the responsibility of dogs that are naturally aggressive and that are hard to contain. I mean, that's the way the statute was written, to give dog owners multiple chances to, you know, save their dogs, and, but the law is what the law is, so.
You said something about obviously not automatically euthanizing them due to the situation, correct, sir?
Correct, and, and, and I'm sure that the Sherri has gone over those with you. I mean, if the council does, in fact, affirm the recommendation of the Department of Public Works, then there are certain steps that you can take, certain measures you can take, kennels, muzzles, you know, registering the dog as a dangerous dog so that, you know, the public can, you know, has the right to know, things of that nature. If you comply with all those provisions of the law, then you comply with them. If you say your landlord will not allow, you know, the kennel with the adequate space for the dog, you know, certain, it's my understanding, the statute says, you know, certain-sized dogs have to have certain-sized kennels. Well, you can, you can move, you can find another piece of rental property, some, you know, that the landlord would allow, you know, those measures to be taken into effect. It's, you know, again, it's not the city's position that we want to automatically euthanize dogs. However, we have to protect the public, and we have to protect their dogs also from this. And so if, if you got a 10-month, two 10-month-old, 55-pound dogs that are jumping three- and four-foot fences, that problem's only going to get worse. So, and we, we don't want to see any other dogs owned by any other people suffer the same fate as the Shih Tzu.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you this question. If, since you can't afford to do that, okay, we do, we do declare it dangerous. It's not vicious, but we declare it dangerous. What do y'all do with it? You don't have a choice, huh?
We have to euthanize it if they cannot take it. We have to euthanize it if they cannot take it and, um, follow the, uh, requirements for the dangerous dog.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Uh, yes, I'd like to state for the record that it's not that we cannot afford it. Again, it is with our landlord, and, I mean, we would just move, however, we also have, um, a contract for the rental of the house, and, uh, staying with, uh, Bossier City Animal Control, uh, they charge for board, obviously. So, it, it is definitely just a time constraint thing at this point, and, um, you know, the longer that they stay there, the more that, that adds up for the board. And then after that, you know, if we were to be able to move, then, I mean, we could afford to get them back. We can afford for the setup now. It's just we can't do the setup now.
Oh, one, one last question. If he were to find somebody that could take on the responsibility of the dog, and they built the kennels, um, and met all the requirements with it being deemed dangerous, is that an option?
Um, it's my understanding that it would be an option. They would just have to be willing to follow the rules and constraints of the dangerous dog, and the dogs would still carry that label.
Okay.
So...
Because every time you go outside, you gotta be muzzled and everything like that, so...
Yes, um, every time they're outside, they have to be on a leash with a muzzle. Um, there's signs that have to be posted on the property, um, and if they're put outside by themselves at all, they have to be in a completely enclosed with top and bottom kennel. Um, and generally, we would recommend a concrete bottom. Um, I did tell them that they could do a chain-link bottom since they were in, um, a rental home, and they may not be able to pour concrete, um, and that should mean, um, should keep, um, dogs in as well, so...
I would suggest if that actually happens, that whoever the new owners appear before this council and, and make the assertion that this gentleman would have to make if he kept the dogs. And, and that is just from a liability standpoint, that if those dogs got out and did the same thing, we're putting the city's assets at risk.
Yes, sir.
Because the ordinance is written for him to comply, so if he can't comply in, in the timeframe given, then whoever has those dogs has to come and take his position of liability and compliance relative to those two animals.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, Mr. Jacobs?
So for the rec, and let's...
Yeah, through the Department of Public Works, i- i- if you were to allow, I, I guess for lack of a better term, I think the statute would allow for that, a quote surrogate owner with a surrogate location, but that, whoever that may or may not be, they have to comply to the satisfaction of Public Works with all those requirements.
And the council.
And the council, and they would have to, you know, um, you know, give assurances in writing that those dogs will be housed under those conditions at this particular location so that we know the location of this dog at all, or these dogs at all time, so that, you know, Public Works would be able to go by and check on them, you know, so on and so forth.
Uh, I've got one question, Mr. Jacobs. If, what, what happens if the dogs leave outside the city limits of Bossier City and go to Caddo or Mendon or someplace like that? What happens with the, what happens with the legality standpoint?
I think we've still, this has happened before.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if it's outside our jurisdiction, however...
We still gotta track them. That's happened before. One guy moved to Texas.
We have to track them, and we have to inform
Exactly.
the next location, whether it's the parish or some type of incorporated municipality, that, hey, these dogs are coming. They have been deemed dangerous by the city of Bossier. This is why, this is the incident, and so if you wish to impose any like requirements on the dogs within that jurisdiction, then, you know, again, that's to protect the city from, you know, any sort of liability or lawsuit. Um, obviously, you know, a dog getting killed is unfortunate, but it's not nearly as serious as a, a young child, um, you know, that you, you know, that could be seriously maimed, disfigured, or killed. If you see, you, you see those stories on a, I wouldn't say a frequent basis, but on a, unfortunately, on a fairly regular basis, so... And that is to, that is to protect the, the city's assets.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. We deny the appeal.
I second it.
Since this is a, uh, public hearing, is there anyone else who would like to comment on this today? Okay. Uh, Mr. Chamberlain, thank you for your service to the country. Thank you for being here. Uh, counsel, we have a motion and a second, and there's no comment from the public, and I don't know if we vote on this?
Yes, sir. Since there was a motion and a second to deny the, to deny his appeal, you're gonna have to vote on it.
Okay.
Phil, just for, like we do, just, yea, yea or nay?
Yea, yea, uh, the motion was to deny the appeal, his appeal, so a yea would deny the appeal and would uphold Animal Control's ruling. A nay would be to grant his appeal.
Counsel, prepare your vote. Please cast your vote.
And Mr. Jacobs, the district court thing, he has ten days, correct?
We need to be very careful about giving somebody legal advice. Uh, there, there is a delay period, um, allowed by the statute, and, um, I would, I would recommend, uh, to the owner that if he does not feel that he's competent to represent himself, that he needs to consult with an attorney to make sure that all the provisions of the statute are complied with, you know? Um, I, I feel uncomfortable giving legal advice to somebody who's taking an adverse position to the city.
Mr. Henderson, your vote?
Yeah, I hit it. Did it not go through?
It did not go through.
All right, it went through that time.
Motion carries to deny the appeal.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bossier City by annexing approximately nine-point-one-two-two acres adjacent to the current city limits via the South I-220 and West Innovation Drive boundaries. Final reading?
Some of, second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Williams, a second by Mr. Maggio. Do we have any comments or, uh, debate by the council? Do we have comments from the public? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Something happened on my side to about half my stuff. Adopting ordinance approving the reapportionment of council district for Bo- the city of Bossier City according to map two of 2022. Final reading?
Second.
Uh, motion, Mr. Montgomery or Mr. Hammond? Uh, Mr. Montgomery. Montgomery. A second, Mr. Smith, okay. Uh, any comments? Public input? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare the completion of the city hall parking lot expansion project at a total construction cost of three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, fifty dollars and twenty-seven cents, including change order number one in the amount of twenty-thousand-eight-hundred-five dollars and twenty-seven cents, and to amend ordinance seventy-seven of 2021, leaving a surplus funding for its balance. Final reading?
Some of, second.
Uh, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to hear. That's going pretty fast.
Somebody...
It's me.
Motion, Mr. Smith, a second, Mr. Montgomery.
I had Mr. Montgomery.
Montgomery, okay. All right, good. Y'all aren't used to us getting them in down here. I think so. I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure I do that voice.
Usually it's...
Okay, um, public input, any? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing the city of Bossier City to settle pending lawsuit, city of Bossier City versus Nickel Lube Center et al. Final reading?
Some of, second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Maggio.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion, counsel? Uh, the floor is open for comments of the public. Please cast your vote. New business?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to come from the 2022 sales tax capital improvement budget to increase expenditures for the police department, other equipment, and decrease fund balance by seventy-five thousand. First reading?
Some of, second.
Motion, Mr. Montgomery, and second, Mr. Free. Any comments or discussion? Input from public? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance appropriating the sum of two-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars from the EMS capital contingency fund for the purchase of a new records management system for the Bossier City Fire Department. First reading?
Some of, second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second, Mr. Maggio. Any comments? Uh, yeah, I do, Mr. President. Just with a purchase of this size, can, I mean, what, what is this for, chief? I know it says for records management.
Uh, we were using Firehouse. Firehouse sold out to ESO. ESO is who does our EMS reporting. This is for the fireside reporting, once you turn in all your information, your inspections and all that for your PIL rating, uh, so you have to keep records, and that's, uh, actually for four years. I think the total cost was two oh seven something for a four-year contract with ESO, but I did put more just in case you have some unknown that comes up.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Chief, is, is there any, uh, ongoing, uh, training that's gonna cost us in, in the next four or five years?
I don't think so, because we already use ESO, so this, uh, with this comes the training also, so and it should be pretty easy for our guys to understand because it's drop-down boxes, just like the EMS stuff we use already. So, shouldn't be very complicated, I wouldn't think. Hope not.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. The floor is open for comments of someone in the public. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend ordinance ninety of 2021 with Nixon Engineering Solutions to provide a drainage study, phase one A, construction documents, and right-of-way documents for the Tinsley Ditch Basin Relief Plan. First reading?
Some of, second.
Second, Mr.?
I'm sorry, I'll speak up louder.
Okay. I have a motion made by Mr. Williams, a second by Mr. Smith. Any comment or discussion? Public input? Counsel, cast your vote.
Mr. Free? Thank you. Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to appropriate two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars from the 2015 LCDA bond issued for the completion of the East Bank Fire Station. First reading?
Some of, second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second, Mr. Maggio. Any comments? Yes. Um, I, I, I got, I got several questions. Why in the, why in the original phase was, why was a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars plus removed out for these items, and now it's going back in?
Uh, the original, uh, reason to remove them was to get it within the available funds that had been allocated by the council for the project and get the project moving forward.
So, basically, just took money out to get the project going, so now here at the end, we have a huge, we've got a huge change order for, to put the original items back in to complete the project.
That's part of the request, yes, sir.
When, I'm, I mean, I know all of this was done way, way before we, I think, back in 2020, when the original, um, ordinance came across for two-point-one million, and then came back, and we have a contract, I think, for what, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine mil, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight million, something like that, with, um, McKenna's Brothers? Um, I just, would it have not been easier just to come back and ask the council for, for the, you know, for that amount to get it, to get it back up? I mean, it's just, I don't know. I mean, just in construction, you're taking something out just to get it in bid, but then you know that that has to all go back in in order to complete the project.
Yeah, and Brian, I don't, I don't know all the nuances back when that was done, um, but it, it could have been related to the way that that bond that was used to fund that project was structured. Those bonds accrue interest over time, and at the time that the project was awarded, the funding was not there, but over time, it's accrued enough interest to allocate this. Complete conjecture on my part, but I know that that does happen over time.
Mr. President, if, um, if we removed money from the beginning, I, I'm assuming after we awarded the bid to McKenna's Brothers, did we go to the other contractors that also bid and said, hey, we're removing these dollar amounts? Is it gonna change your price any, to see if there was another bid that would have been just as competitive? Or were we required to?
Let me add, I think you're asking a legal question. Am I correct?
I'm asking, did, yeah, did we, did we go back?
You're asking a legal question, which he's not a lawyer. So, at that time that the decision was made, was Mr. Hall the city attorney?
He was.
So, um, I, I don't think it's fair to ask him the decision that was made by the city attorney who was the appointment at the time. My, my request would be that you ask Mr. Jacobs to look into why that decision was made rather than our city engineer.
Okay, that's, that, that's fair, and so I will, um, ask that of the city attorney to look into. Uh, also, I, I noticed that that change order for a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand never came before the prior council. Under, um, I, so I guess this question would be for the city attorney. Would a change order of that size even negative need to come before the council?
Well, I don't feel comfortable asking questions, um, you know, without a chance to review the entire file on the project out, you know, consulting with Mr. Hall, um, you know, who made certain, uh, decisions at the time, consulting with the engineer. I, I, I feel i- it's always dangerous, you know, you, you know, when I, when I start answering questions off the top of my head, um, it's, you know, uh, you know, sometimes I could be wrong, and, uh, you know, the only thing worse than being wrong is being wrong in public.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, what, what I would do is I would just, i- i- if you could get with me, and, um, you know, when I could take some notes and get all the questions that you have, I can pull the file on this particular project, and that way I could get you the answers, you know, that, you know, that, that you have requested, um, you know, and I can assure myself that, you know, that I, that I am correct. I, i- i- it's very difficult for me to answer these questions, um, when I'm not prepared to do so.
Hypothetically.
Yes, sir. That's fair enough, so, um, this will be back on the agenda in two weeks, so, um, we can look into that before that.
Any additional discussion, counsel? Any comments from the public on this item? Counsel, cast your vote.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Did it not pop up?
Thank you.
Hmm?
Mm-hmm. Looks like everybody voted.
Brian, again.
Did you vote?
Brian.
Yeah. No voting.
Does it vote?
See, right there. Against.
I'm sorry, yes.
Y'all were looking in the wrong column.
Yeah. You're correct. My apologies, councilman.
I can't see any votes on my side.
It's six to one, six yays, one nay. Councilman Hammond is a nay.
Okay, thank you. That helps me. I don't know what's going on today with this thing.
Yeah, it's putting up here was defeated, which.
There it goes, carried.
Yeah, I just did it.
Think it's the heat.
I'm not sure. All right. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for the water treatment plant in public utilities department. First and final reading?
Some move, second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Montgomery, I meant, and second, Mr. Maggio. Okay. Yeah, I plan to get some new hair in eight next week. I mean, any comment of the, from the public here on this item? Cast your vote, counsel, please.
Mr. Montgomery, did yours pop up? Did it pop up on yours?
For this?
Uh-huh.
No.
Yea or nay?
Yea.
It's showing that you're not even connected anymore.
I'm not. Y'all got tired of listening to me. I know what's going on. Down here on the end.
Well, I just, I, I just did it myself. I did it. I'm not sure what's going on with this today. Adopt a resolution, that one's gone. Let me delete that one. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accountant one due to resignation in the finance department. First and final reading?
Some move, second.
Okay, Montgomery made the motion, and second, Mr. Smith. Any more comments from the council? Any comment from the public? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Montgomery, what is your vote?
Yea.
Thank you. And now it shows you're connected again. Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams and Mr. Darby, what are your votes?
Yea. Mine's showing up on my screen as a yea.
I think there's something going on with the system itself.
Yeah, mine's showing defeated. Yours is a nay.
Mr. Hammond, what's your vote?
I was, I was a yea.
Thank you.
Mine says it carried.
There it goes. Mine said defeated a minute ago.
Now, now it does.
I'm not sure what's going on with it. Adopt a resolution authorizing a change to the pay period schedule. First and final reading?
Some move, second.
You gotta be fast with y'all.
I vote yea.
Okay.
It shows that you're connected now, so let's see if it pops up.
So, we have a motion, Mr. Hammond, and a second by Mr. Montgomery. End of discussion? And with the counsel preference or brief from the financial director on this item? We don't need one?
Well, I mean, we had a, a pretty at length discussion. I think everybody on the council was, including the mayor and the city attorney, were all present in our proposal from the council to rectify the situation, which Ms. Williamson reached out to our independent auditing firm, Heard McElroy and Vestal, and they confirmed that the council's proposal to do a manual entry and manual checks would be approved and appropriate, given the situation. So, it is resolved and we move forward.
Chair, I'd like to recognize Mr. Montgomery for his insight on this matter. We did have a discussion, and he was very astute in bringing an option to the table. So, we appreciate you, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any public input on this item? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of a recreation maintenance worker one and backfilling any position this creates for parks and recreation. First and final reading?
Some move, second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, and second by Mr. Montgomery. Discussion, counsel? Comment, public? Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Reports, Angela Williamson, Finance Director, monthly financial report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended June 30th, 2022. Page one is the revenue by fund report. The city is currently running 27% over budget. Gaming revenue is down 6% compared to prior year, but sales tax is up 10% compared to June 2021. Page two is the expenses by fund report. The city's currently running 9% under budget. The alternative fuel stations are over budget, but the revenue is as well at 201%. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As previously noted, sales tax revenue is up 10% compared to June 2021. Page four is the Manning report. The city has two less employees than last month. The total employees as of month end is 662. This is 43 employees below the budgeted total of 705. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for June 2022 has increased significantly compared to June 2021. Current year-to-date income has increased 90% over prior year and is 40% under current year budget. On a rolling 12 months basis, the current net operating income is up 6%. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Thank you.
I don't have one for you, but I wanted to ask if the mayor has considered any proactive steps regarding the, the fuel costs?
Yes, we're in the process of putting that together right now.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, we sure are.
Yeah, I think that's, going forward, that's seen.
Yes, we're gonna bring it upon you for the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, sir.
We were talking about that this week.
Okay. Next report?
It's gonna be the engineering department, monthly project report.
Good afternoon, counsel. A quick update of everything going on in the engineering department of the last month. Still ranging right around 101 million in ongoing design and construction projects, 95 million currently under construction, a big part of that being the second phase of the Carriageway. We got nine projects in the design or bid phase, and then nine projects under construction. Quite a bit of subdivision projects coming to a close, but have had a lot of work in those areas as well over the last month. Kind of an update on the Carriageway. Still, you know, we're showing 11 days behind schedule. I think I've described to the council previously how we calculate that. That's basically just time elapsed over what they've asked for in construction, you know, given the length of time that they've got on this project. That's very good, and the dry weather's helping us stay on target.
Hey, Ben, can I ask you one question about this before you move on?
Yeah.
Is that grade crossing at Shed Road, right there by Smith, construction, is that gonna reopen before anything, or what, what is the?
Currently, they're working on the roundabout and things in that area. I don't know.
Okay.
It's possible that that reopens through there, but I, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
The Carriageway pump station, again, we did the startup on, on that station, working through some punchless items, warranty items and things like that to get that complete, but they're right at the finish line. East Bank Fire Station, very close to being complete there, a little behind schedule. Of course, these change order items will, will include some additional days and things like that, assuming that the council approves that for some of these other items. But if you haven't been out there, it's beautiful. It's looking very good. The LTRI building's coming along, a little ahead of schedule there, starting to get some good production. Again, weather is, albeit hot and miserable out there, very good for getting projects moving. The Highway 71 lighting improvements, Phase 2, that will be kicking off very soon. That's a picture of the previous phase work there, so the new project will look much like that one. Then the Bossier Arts Council improvements project, that one again will be kicking off here very soon as well. This is a listing. I won't read all of those, but those are all of the private subdivisions that are in the process of being constructed right now. It's quite a few of them. Full of Love Drainage Improvements Project, we got preliminary plans complete. We're coordinating with contractors to get that work moving quickly. The Bardo Lane and Montgomery Lane Drainage Improvements, Clinton and I met with Rayleigh and Associates week before last to review their design. Got quite a bit of, of property acquisition or easement, temporary construction acquisition, I should say, that's gonna be required to complete that project, but they're doing a good job with that. The Citywide Street Improvement Project, not moving along as briskly as I would like, about to throw some, some jet fuel on that to get those projects moving within the next four weeks, and solicited at least two phases of that work, working with Clinton right now on that. The Parkway Drive and Elm Grove Ditch improvements were close. We, we've got to get the right-of-way acquisition complete, and we'll be ready to begin construction on that. Golden Meadows Turn Lane, working on survey, and then the Barstow Boulevard Lighting Project, that's over there, close to Full of Love. We're waiting on some feedback from the power company. I reached out to them a couple of weeks back to get some firm pricing on that, and we'll be working with the legal department to get that project moving forward. Any questions?
I think the Highway 71 Turn Lane is probably not before. Have a plan before school starts back.
No, and there's some concerns with that particular project as it relates to pedestrian crossing that we're working with DOTD on that may throw a whole lot of cold water on.
We're going into Golden, going into Golden Meadows?
Yeah. That's a, that's an issue we're working through.
Yeah.
It's never easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Any announcements? Counsel, thank you for your participation and your service. This meeting is adjourned.